Good morning and welcome to Spokane City Council's study session for today. We've got several items on our agenda. We're going to get a presentation from, two presentations from planning, one on the building opportunities for housing comprehensive plan changes and the South Logan Transit Oriented Development Update. And then we're going to have a very brief conversation about a resolution forming the Municipal Law and Justice Coordinating Subcommittee and then a supplementary budget conversation. So with that, I'll invite Kevin Freebys.
Good morning, Council President, members of the council. It's nice to see you all again. And it's so nice that we have a long enough mouse now I can actually reach the podium. So, small things. I'm going to give a fair, well, short for me, presentation. And then, of course, I'm happy to answer any questions you have on this important project. So today, I'll just very quickly hit on the history and the background. I do have a little bit of data because I can't help myself. I have to show off some data. I'll go over some of the public engagement work that we've done on this. I'll go, I'll summarize the proposal for you. And of course, the Plan Commission held their hearing late last month on this proposal, so I'll give you a summary of what they said. And then a very quick slide on what's coming next. So, I think I'm preaching to the choir here. You all know just about as much as I do about this, but just as a summary, the city of Spokane has seen unprecedented growth in the last few years. To give you an example of what that looks like, this little light blue dashed line you see is the population growth that we were expecting according to the regional planning and the Office of Financial Management Proposals or Projections. And you can see in the dark blue line, we clearly have exceeded that. This is one aspect of a really complex situation, but ultimately, our population is growing and it's growing faster than we expected. And that's not helping. There is quite a lot of demand for housing. There isn't quite a lot of supply, especially, you know, the number, the exact number of houses depends on who you ask, but there is a significant number of housing units in the city that are necessary to meet the growth that we're seeing. And there is, of course, you know, there are some impediments to developing more housing in the city. Some of them are within our control, some of them aren't. But this proposal ultimately is about some of those factors that are within the city's control. So what do we know? According to the Washington Center for Real Estate Research, for the first time, they are indicating that a median income family in Spokane cannot afford a median income house. They consider on their affordability index, a rating of 100. It means that it's just affordable, just barely affordable for a median family to buy a median-priced home. It's currently at 80. It has fallen very quickly. So we have improved. We have been permitting, we have been building quite a lot, but we are not there yet. Affordability is still very low. And it is not just affordability. We talk about affordability. People hear affordable housing, they hear low-income housing. It's more what we like to call attainable housing. It's housing at all levels. Everybody is struggling finding the homes that they need to be safe, secure, healthy, and happy. It isn't just the lowest cost or the highest cost, it's everything. The current comprehensive plan and our zoning code, you make, make the response to this situation probably a little slower, definitely more difficult. And that's really what we're hoping to rectify with this situation. But also, it's important to note that this is not a from-the-hip solution. As you know, we have talked about this time and time again. We have studied this in many different products. Most importantly, the Housing Action Plan that was adopted a few years ago. And what came out of that was the building opportunity and choices for all interim ordinance? Hey, I got the name right. BOKA, everybody calls it BOKA. BOKA wasn't the beginning of the story, it was the first response. It was the emergency response. This is the longer thought-out, more complex, more nuanced response to this situation. But, you know, our understanding has been growing over time and our engagement with the public has been constant over time. Some, some graphics, because I love graphics and I'm a mapmaker, so I couldn't help myself. The orange area that you see on this map represents the private property. So I've taken streets out, I've taken rights-of-way out, but this is the property within the city that is currently zoned for single-family residential development. What that means is 60% of the city, unless you get a special permit, you can only build one thing, single-family detached homes. Add to that a further 23% of the city in red here where residential's not allowed. Say you are a developer and you've decided, you know what, we have a housing crisis, I want to do a duplex, I want to build a nice duplex in the city of Spokane. 83% of the city is not a possibility for you. This is before the interim ordinance, the interim ordinance helped with this a lot, but before BOKA was passed, 83% of the city was off-limits to anything that was a duplex, a triplex, a fourplex. This is why we're here. This, this situation needs adjusting if we're going to address the growth that we're expecting. Of course, we wouldn't want to do anything like this without a supreme amount of engagement. I went with a rolling list here because I thought hitting the mouse 60 times in order to show you all the things that we have done would be a little repetitive. But honestly, I have to say that this department and other departments as well have undertaken a phenomenal public engagement process. We've had hundreds of meetings, we've talked to people, we had a survey go out that got more responses than any survey that I'm aware of at the city. We had meetings in every council district, we had targeted meetings where we talked about specific topics, we had open-ended meetings, we went to neighborhoods, we went to developers, we went to finance folks, we got to talk to property appraisers, which was quite an illuminating experience. They don't speak the same language that we do in many, in many ways, and we learned a lot by finding out, you know, how do you get financing for something like this? Honestly, it's, it's been great, it's been extremely good learning experience, but I want to highlight that what we are proposing to you today did not come from the minds of six people on the sixth floor. It came from conversations, it came from discussions at all levels. We had some major efforts in there that scrolled by and I want to highlight those. One, of course, is that survey that I talked about. We got 3,400 responses. Only a couple from outside the city, they were mostly city residents, an amazing response to that. And actually, it flowed into our community forums as well because we use the survey respondents as invitees to those forums. And so, we got people who were engaged and had already engaged with us. In a lot of cases, we were able to dive even deeper than we were able to do in the survey to learn a lot. Those community forums, we held one in each council district, two to three meetings in each council district. Not everybody was able to make the third meeting, but it was more of a coming-together meeting, so it was okay. We also had a community organization roundtable. We pulled together as many agencies who provide housing and support in the city that we possibly could, hearing from some that never come to city meetings. And that was terrific. That's actually what this picture's from, is that community organization roundtable. And then also, following the discussions last year when we were considering pausing our private application process, you'll remember Bethany Presbyterian came in, asked us to consider the stipulation in GMA for density bonuses for faith-based organizations. So we, with the help of Knox Presbyterian and Bethany, we pulled together quite a few faith-based organizations in the area, had a terrific targeted talk about how they develop, what, what value they provide. We've, of course, made countless meetings and presentations as well, but I want to highlight that the first four, there is a full summary of what was talked about, what we found, what we learned in the staff report that I gave you a link for. So if you're really curious about a deep dive into those, there's Casey on my team did an excellent job summarizing what we learned. And also in there is something we call the parking lot. There were, of course, topics that came up that aren't addressed by this project, and they're listed in those summaries as well. So check out the exhibits to the staff report if you're really curious. So what are we coming to you with today? The Phase 1 of this project, Building Opportunity for Housing, is simple. It is a text amendment to Chapter 3. Chapter 3 of the comprehensive plan is our land use chapter. And then also, we're suggesting three new definitions to go within the glossary just to aid understanding of what was changed and added in Chapter 3. So I'll kind of go over those now. We, we've included some updates to the vision statement at the beginning of the document, or the, the chapter, I'm sorry, and also to the value statement. So you'll recall, other than, I think, Chapter 4, which is formatted a little differently, the chapters in the comprehensive plan have a distinct vision statement that was developed with the community and then a series of values that shape the policies that follow. In this case, it has been quite a long time since they've been, we've had a deep dive on those. We had many discussions with the public and with the different engagement efforts to consider updates to those, and you'll see those in the proposal. Also, land use policies, LU 1.3 and 1.4, those two policies are the most applicable towards residential development in the city. We have proposed, through this effort, we have proposed significant changes to those. You'll recall Plan Commission asked City Council to, to consider changes to those, this is following that. This is also following the study of the Housing Action Plan, all those other efforts that have gone on, this is the end result. Looking at LU 1.3 and 1.4, and I won't go through those word by word because we don't have all day, but I will say, one of the things we found is that throughout the comprehensive plan, there is a lot of policy, vision, and value support for, for housing choice in every neighborhood, diversity in every neighborhood, affordability, different ranges of affordability in every neighborhood. And then we had 1.3 and 1.4, which were very restrictive and very tightly controlling residential, and that's part of why we ended up with 60% of the city only being single-family residential and nothing else. So you'll see a lot of changes in those two policies. There are, there are two other policies that got some, some updates, just to make sure they were consistent with what was being proposed. One of the key things here is that we have proposed stepping away from talking density, 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 density. The residential land uses in the comprehensive plan were entirely density-based. In fact, the density number, units per acre, was in the names of each of the land uses. It is, it isn't that density isn't important, it's that it is only one part of the picture. And so what we've chosen instead is the term intensity. And intensity includes density, the number of units per acre is still part of the conversation. But you need to look at mass, the height of the buildings, the shape of the buildings, how they address the street, how they interact with what's around them. And the best way I can describe this is, let me, is to give you a picture. Take what looks like a single-family house, for instance, in Cliff Cannon where we have a lot of middle housing types, a lot of twos and threes, but it looks like a single-family house, it's got a front door, it's got a peaked roof, it's got a backyard and a garage. Does it really matter as much that that is one unit inside, or two units inside, or three units inside, if it's shaped the same, if it responds the same, if it looks the same? Not necessarily, if it still looks like a home. And so the idea is, I'll get to you in just a second, the idea is not to focus only on the number of kitchens in the house, but to focus on how it fits into the neighborhood, council member.
Yeah, so is there a consistent algorithm to determining what the intensity is and how to measure that?
It isn't, it isn't in the comp plan to say specifically it's this, this number and this mathematical formula that says what the intensity is. It's more generally described, it's part of why this process is two-phase. The municipal code is where that distinct shape comes from. And how we guide development to actually say what that lower intensity looks versus a higher intensity, that's going to come in the municipal code.
But there will be an objective, measurable way to say, you know, and I don't know, what does the intensity scale look like? Is it a 1 to 10? Is it a low, medium, high?
It's like a low, medium, high, it's actually four levels. We kept the same number of levels, although that might get adjusted in the future.
Okay.
And then the, the actual objective standards, which is what you're talking about, that is, that's got, that has to be in the municipal code, especially with recent law changes.
So low, low intensity would essentially just be single-family sitting on a large lot. I assume medium intensity, how would you describe medium intensity?
Actually, I've got four slides that's going to describe all four of those intensities for you.
Perfect.
So if I can, I'll do that, and then if I, you still have questions, let me know. Two more things real quick in general. One is, we have built into the comprehensive plan some flexibility for residential land use. And what that means is, and this, this will come also as part of the municipal code amendments as Phase 2. Previously, one land use designation on the comp plan meant one zoning possibility. You didn't have a choice. We had two maps, but one choice. No reason to have two maps, didn't make any sense, it doesn't follow planning concepts of what the difference is between land use and zoning is. And so what we have set the path for, we haven't necessarily completed it, but we've set an opening where a land use designation has a choice. Maybe you have a low, low-intensity land use next to a, next to a major street, across the street from a center and has tons of parking. There's no reason why that isn't a simple rezone to make it more intense. In the future, our hope is that with the comp plan and the municipal plan changes, that somebody coming in and saying, you know what, I just want a little more height, I just want a few more, you know, a slightly bigger building, there's a park across the street and there's a big street in front of me, why can't I do that? Today, that requires 15, 14 months and $7,000 and a long, lengthy comp plan amendment process for something that doesn't change the city that much over time. The hope is that through this process, through the changes here and the changes you will see in the municipal code, that that's a simple rezone. Means it goes to the hearing examiner, there's still process, there's still approval and standards to meet, but it doesn't require the extreme amount of work that we, that we typically spend each year on comprehensive plan amendments. This is just residential, it's not going to change comp plan amendments for commercial or anything else.
So on that, is there any best guesses as to how that might potentially reduce the workload for, for staff?
Well, a, in general, I can tell you that a rezone is a hearing examiner, it takes, you know, probably six to 12 weeks instead of six, you know, instead of 15 months. It require, our comp plan amendments right now require up to two full-time staff members to spend 14 months on what cha, if you took all the comp plan amendments that we've processed since this comp plan was adopted in 2001, we're talking about the private ones, the private applications, less than 1% of the city has changed. In fact, it's less than one-half percent of the city. It is a tiny piece of the city that we are spending an enormous amount of time on. It requires your time, too.
What if you took into account the ones that were turned down?
The, the, shoot, you would ask that last time and I haven't pulled that together yet.
I'd be curious to see, because I know there's been, there's been some, I mean, probably many that have been turned down, so.
I can get you that number.
Kevin?
Yes?
You included or thought about design standards at all when we're talking about these issues?
Yes. So the, the conversation from the public's perspective, they're not as interested or up-to-date maybe on what the policy says, they're asking, how big is it going to be? What colors are it going to be? Those are design standards, that's definitely going to be in Phase 2. What we've done along the way is we have collected that information, that input, and that, the engagement that's ongoing to develop the code amendments, we'll be considering that as well. So, because typically, design requirements, in the comp plan, what you want is, what's the goal of those design requirements? And that's in here with this compatible and complementary discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
But the exact, like, what is the height? What is the building footprint? That's more code, that's municipal code language, so it'll be included in Phase 2.
Does this touch at all on centers and corridors? Because when we looked at that back in 2013, we didn't put design standards in, but, but it sounds like what you're talking about here is a lot of what we did with centers and corridors in terms of massing and height and number of driveways coming out on our chair, all that kind of stuff.
Mm-hmm.
That would make it pedestrian, more of a pedestrian environment. So is that what we're kind of looking at here, too?
For the residential side of things?
Yeah.
Yes. Is, is some more guidance for residential development to ensure that it's compatible. The idea of middle housing, especially the way Washington State's looking at it, is that middle housing, 1, 2, 3, 4, or 2, 3, 4, 5, even 6 in some situation, units per bil, per lot, is functionally and can be, design-wise, in the way it interfaces with the existing environment, can be similar to a single-family house. But you have to apply, you know, some standards to that. The way the law says it is, if we apply a standard to middle housing, we have to also apply it to single-family housing. So that's going to be a fun discussion, but it is part of the discussion moving forward with Phase 2.
In, in all cases? Any design standard that applies to middle housing?
It's, it's, I'm not 100% sure how it flashes out in real life, we are kind of still waiting for commerce guidance on some of this.
If that's the case... If that's the case, it seems like...
But the way it says it is that you can't restrict middle housing in any, what is it exactly, like, in the way that you don't restrict single-family housing?
But it wouldn't apply to design standard, though.
So it would apply to design standards. We're still waiting on specific guidance from Commerce, and I don't remember the exact language, but the, essentially, the direction that we're being pointed in is that you have to treat middle housing types the exact same as you do single-family. Commerce recognizes, and I think the legislature recognizes, there are some inherent differences, and I'll give you an example. Cottage housing is listed as a middle housing type. There are probably standards that would, that should apply to cottage housing, that don't apply to single-family homes, simply because a cottage housing development has certain features that make it a cottage housing development. So there are some requirements that we can probably put around certain middle housing types that are inherent to that type, but we can't impose a standard on a middle housing type that we don't also impose on a single-family home unless there's sort of that rational basis for making a distinction.
Are there any concerns that the guidance we get might create a situation where it's harming either single-family or Boca-type projects? That the interpretation might be something that really misses where it should be?
I, I don't have any concerns at this point.
Okay.
But we're just waiting to see what, what the guidance is that comes from Commerce.
And so if we allowed, say, cottage housing to front on a walkway rather than a street, we would then be required by law to allow a single-family to front on a walkway rather than a street?
Well, if, if you're talking about an individual house within a cottage development, that's an example where a cottage development is, has some inherent differences, and we can probably have standards that apply there that don't apply to single-family homes.
Kevin, before you get too far down.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have any stats on the number of, let's see, you said 60% is single-family? What's the ownership of, how many of those are owned, and how many are rentals? Do we have that ratio?
I can get it for you. I don't have it off the top of my head. The tenure is easily understood.
Okay, because it seems my memory is that our ownership rate for the city of Spokane is pretty darn low, and compared to some other cities our size, and that affects other things.
Yeah. I can't break it down by, like, single-family homes versus everything else, because we're, we're still waiting for the 2020 census data to get to that level. It is not yet to that level.
Just ownership, you know?
But I can get you ownership. I can get you the percentage of ownership versus rental in the city. I just don't know it off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can email it to everybody.
Thank you.
Okay. So that's, so that's kind of where we are in general. And like I said, there are four residential uses that we have now. We're still saying four for now. There's some rationale, then in the future, we might, once you have middle housing kind of allowed everywhere, which is what the ultimate requirements of the law are, it doesn't always make sense to have four. Maybe we should have three or two. That is something that we're hoping to refine moving forward as we get ready for 2026's major update. Right now, we wanted to make sure to do this simply as we could. So we currently have four residential uses. The proposal is to retain four. These have names. You'll notice the numbers are gone, because again, we're trying to step away from that hard calculation of density only. And the names that we've come up with, they all start with residential, is low, plus, moderate, and high. Again, these are based on intensity, not just density. We've provided some definitions and some discussion in the plan itself to make, make it a little clearer what these mean, what they look like. But again, you know, specific numbered standards, that's code language. This gives the guidance towards that. Also, we have made it clear that middle housing, two, three, fours, maybe fives and six in some places, is appropriate in all areas. It can fit in everywhere with, with correct standards and meeting the other standards.
So I, this is where I'm getting confused. So we're, so we are allowing, under residential low intensity, we are allowing full Boca development?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, that's compliant with 1110 that was passed this year.
I just, I feel like we should just strike residential low, because it's a misnomer, and it gives kind of false, a false sense, I think, of what's actually happening, and just start with residential plus. To me, that just seems like it'd be more honest.
That's a possibility, that's something that, that the council could propose, but it would require some rapid, rapid announcements by, by us, but we could talk about that. That's, that is a topic that Plan Commission's brought up, that we've, we've considered. It's hard to, if we were talking about our current standards of like four to 10, 10 to 20, it's kind of hard to say, is there even that four anymore? Is that even really, you know?
Or even, instead of residential low, call it like residential base, or, you know, it's the base, it's the, but not, so that you're giving some more of a appropriate response.
And again, the, the nice thing about this is, just like Boca gave us the room to do the study and the work to get this developed, we also, in what, two years, we have an update coming, so that we have another opportunity to hit this again, we have another opportunity to really deep dive, if we need to, into what this has done and how it succeeded. It's kind of nice, actually, to have that long-range look, and the ability to look back and say, what worked, what didn't, so.
Kevin, one more, one more thing. I think it's important that this be really digestible for the public, and that we are able to articulate when, when people ask us, or when we go to events or council meetings, what's middle housing? What's affordable? There's a lot of confusion, especially between affordable, low-income, transitional.
Oh, yeah.
What was the other one? And people are just mixing them all up, and, oh, low barrier, that was the other one.
Oh, yeah.
And I really think it's important that we start to really define our terms and be very specific about what we're talking about, and exactly what it is, so that we don't get the blowback that we're getting now.
Mm-hmm. No, absolutely. And it's frustrating, too, because not only, it's not only us that uses a different term for affordable all the time, for different things, it's the state as well. The definition of affordable housing under 1110 is different than, say, the Affordable Housing Standard for West Quatertif, because of the different enacting legislation. One of the things that we have done is, we've stopped, we don't say affordable so much, unless it's like a state mandated thing, like the, between four and six units a lot in HB 1110, it says the two of them should be affordable, or you should be a certain range for transit. In that case, you have to use their term affordable. What we found through our conversations with the community is, a better term is attainable. It's, it doesn't mean that the price is low. It means that the people looking for housing can attain the homes that they're looking for. It is less, it is less quantitative and more qualitative, but we try not to use the word affordable, because it does mean so many different things. It's, it's impossible sometimes to winnow those out. So, you know, when we talk about accessibility, equity, walkability, but we also talk about attainability, that's to avoid that, well, what percent is affordable? What, what does that mean?
Yeah.
So it is difficult, I agree. In this case, you won't find that the residential land uses hit on affordability as much as they do just the, the way that these uses look and shape, their shape, form, and function, rather than their price. So just to very quickly go through these, as Councilmember Cathcart asked, residential low, this is your traditional single-family detached neighborhood, plus some middle housing types. Standards will, you know, will, will have to be included in the municipal code to kind of keep it looking like middle housing types, or looking like a, a single-family detached neighborhood, but still having, you know, twos and threes and fours. It's possible to do those without them looking like an apartment building. In fact, some of the Boca projects look very much like a standard house. It does allow, it does, it does call for that new development to fit into the area it's going into, but also to maybe enhance it. So, you know, it should, the standards will look at ways to make sure that it's not a three-story blockhouse next to 15 standard, you know, 1930s-looking Spokane homes with peaked roofs and things like that. So that will be developed, the details of that will be developed, but it's definitely calling for that kind of compatibility. Also, there's a lot of language in the comprehensive plan already that talks about, in fact, the existing LU 1.3 talks about some small, non-residential uses in neighborhoods, and that included things like, you know, parks and schools. We've just kind of made that a little clearer, a little more explicit. If there's an opportunity where perhaps a corner store, or everybody mentions the Scoop, my favorite, my favorite neighborhood retail project, this is, it's a little clearer now that that's okay. That, that doesn't kill a neighborhood to have a corner ice cream store. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I want a Wisconsin burger in my neighborhood, so.
Duly noted.
Yeah, 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 no, they need to come my way. So just to be clear, then, that a Wisconsin burger, a scoop, is something under this, even under the low, as it's currently called, would be permitted?
Under the comp plan, there will be some, there would likely be some limitations in the code as to where that's appropriate, but it isn't a prohibition, which is what it feels like now. Like, you can never do retail in a, in a small neighborhood.
So when you say where it's appropriate, do you mean where on the, the block face? Like, it has to be on the corner? Or are you saying, like, where within the city?
The where is in what conditions, what property conditions mean it's okay? So like, is it on an arterial? Is it next to something else? Is it, and those will be developed at the code stage. But that's what I mean, not the location so much by the, by the physical characteristics of the site and whether it's appropriate that way.
But to be clear, some of the neighborhood retail that we love is, are not on arterials. And so?
Yeah.
If that's going to be an exclusion, then that might be an issue.
I'm just using it as an example here, I'm not, because that language hasn't been finalized.
So we passed, back when Ben Stuckert was on council, we passed an ordinance that said those legacy properties could be used.
The legacy ones, yes.
Yeah. So if they had been commercial prior, they can be used, there's no prohibition to using them.
I'm thinking about new, newer things that might happen.
But these were, there are a lot of them, if you look at the city, they're everywhere.
I know.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify, first of all, that's a question that has come up from the public and from Plan Commission. I think there's a lot of energy and support behind maybe being a little less restrictive there. The goal of this project wasn't really to completely rethink that part of the comprehensive plan. So there is still some language in the comprehensive plan that I think will limit us in terms of our ability to introduce these, you know, small-format retail uses in neighborhoods. This, I would say, is maybe just the first step. We recognize that in 2026, that's something that we'll, we'll continue to have conversations there. But this was, you know, just sort of a first step at, at addressing that. I think what I'm hearing from you, and, you know, potentially other council members, is that this immediate update maybe could include some additional changes there, and, you know, we'd be willing to talk to you if there's something else that, that we could look at. It was part of our conversations with Plan Commission and with the public, so.
If, if there's still opportunity to have that be well-thought-out, I mean, I think it, it would make sense. If not, and that were, you know, if those types of considerations couldn't be made at this point, then is that, is that something that would have to get put on your work plan for, for '25, or, you know, '24, '25, or how would that?
Well, I mean, we've been expecting that it would be part of the 2026 update, so 2024, 2025, you know, we would be looking at that. Maybe we can meet later and just, we'll have to look at what, in terms of public process and, you know, our duty to ensure that substantial changes have plenty of public involvement and things. We can talk and see what, what other changes there might be.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. So residential plus, same kind of thing, same kind of neighborhood feel, same kind of, you know, that, that, what we call the, you know, the, the usual Spokane neighborhood, but maybe with a little more height, maybe a little more mass. Maybe we don't require such a big setback in the front or the back. Again, that will all be developed, but that's, that's the shape of how things might, might come out. And those places where increased intensity are appropriate, you know, this talks about proximity to transit, that the services are available, that the utilities are available, that is always a, a function of this, to make sure that we're not going to overstress systems. But the, the actual specific standards are still to come. It's just an idea that it's starting to grow as you have more availability of these things or more proximity to these things. Then we have residential moderate. This is really the, kind of the beginning of what we traditionally would call multifamily areas. This is, you know, three-floor walk-ups, that kind of thing. When you're talking about the, the areas around the South Gate Center, the South Gate Target, you know, ongoing issues there notwithstanding, I mean, the development style, that kind of three-floor walk-up that we see in a lot of the city, that would be more residential moderate. But again, these still include possibilities for, for middle housing types. They're still there. It's just, it does allow more if the market and the situation and the, and the location warrants it. This is expected to be closer to centers and corridors, maybe not within the corridor, but as you start to approach. And then, of course, residential high, being that tall, more intense residential development. If you want an example of kind of what this is looking at, look at some of the Lower South Hill, like the Cooper George Building and that kind of thing. We, we need an allowance in there for the high-rise apartment, or the taller apartments in areas where it makes sense. And that's very close to centers and corridors. That's close to downtown. Obviously, you need the service capability and the utility capability, but also the circulation. You got to be able to park people, you got to be able to get folks to buses and to bikes, to be able to park bikes, and then, and all of those features that are necessary. So this wouldn't be widely spread, this is just as we approach centers, residential high. Oh, and there's some language in, so LU 1.3 is that kind of lower range, so that's the, the two lower intensities. LU 1.4 is the higher range, the moderate and high. LU 1.4 does include some discuss, discussion about there should be incentives or bonus for attainable and affordable units. Again, we don't define affordable at the comp plan level necessarily. Oftentimes, that's going to be limited by the program that's helping to fund, or the, the state law that's, that's overriding what that decision is, so. Real quick, the land use plan map currently has four land uses. We're renaming those and kind of giving them a new shape. The zoning map has four residential zones. There's more than that, there's residential agriculture, but it's such a small part of the city, and it's not necessarily affected by this so much, that we're just considering the four primary ones. Right now, it's a one-to-one relationship. If you're the lowest residential, you, you really only have a choice of residential single-family. Again, we're hoping that through this process and through the phase two, we can develop a situation where maybe residential low has more than one choice of zoning, and it'll provide the code, not the comp plan, but the code will provide the standards as to when is it okay to upzone a little bit. Maybe plus has three. These aren't set in stone, this is just to kind of give you a shape. But what it means is, somebody who say, has a zoning of residential two-family, but they're in a moderate zone, they want to go up a little bit, they don't have to do the comprehensive plan process, they don't have to do the 15 months with, with our staff and with you and with Plan Commission. They can come in for a rezone, it's faster, and it's less staff time, it's less of their time, and they have more surety, because it's based on standards, instead of a longer discussion of, of policy and, and that kind of thing. So just keep in mind that this, this doesn't get us there, but it is opening the door to this kind of a situation. Plan Commission, as I said, held their hearing on June 28th. They wholeheartedly recommend that City Council adopt these amendments. They actually voted unanimously to recommend, which was great. They did make some minor changes, so the, the, the form of the ordinance and the changes that are in the packet that I provided for today, that includes Plan Commission's changes. They were mostly simple. One was, we changed the word churches that we had included in some of the new language to places of worship, because it was more inclusive. They agreed with that. Another one was, we originally were calling it residential increased. There was a suggestion by a member of the public, actually, a former council member, Candace Mom, suggested residential plus, and we liked that quite a bit. So that residential increased, if you see older documents or say what's in the staff report, it says residential increased. Plan Commission liked residential plus, so they changed it to plus. So that, and also, the LU 5.5 policy, which is the one about compatibility and complimentary development, we had some discussions with them multiple times in workshops, and there was a version kind of developed after the public comment period, but kind of finalized in there, that they liked better, so they've recommended that you substitute that policy with the, with the newer version that was developed. Again, the packet version that you have for today includes all of those changes as if they're done, so. Next steps, I would appreciate if, if it's okay with the sponsors and with council, if we, if we could put this into on-base next week, which would mean that the ordinance would come to you for a final hearing on July 31st. Of course, as an ordinance, we're going to be here three times with you, so we're, I'll be happily, happy to, to brief it on the 17th, first reading on the 24th. And then, of course, phase two, the municipal code things, they're not waiting, they're[1750.03] municipal code things, they're not waiting. They're already underway. They're already working so that we don't have to spend a lot of time, you know, with a pause while we, while you consider this. But phase two is underway. Our consultant is, is working with our staff now. So just know that we're not, we're not on a pause. We're not losing time, but we want to make sure that you have the opportunity to weigh in on this first. So.
Who are the sponsors?
Councilmember Wilkerson and Councilmember Cathcart.
Okay.
And.
Want to jump on board?
No, thanks.
And that's what I've got. I'm happy to answer any of the questions you might have. I think I just at 45 minutes. Sorry, Maren.
All right. Well, great. Thanks for all the work.
Excellent. Thank you, everybody. I really appreciate it.
All right. And Maren, come on up.
Good morning, almost afternoon. And there it is. Thank you. All right. I'm Maren Murphy with Planning Services, and I'm going to share a brief update, 15 minutes, on South Logan Transit Oriented Development Project. We've been working quite a bit over the last couple of months, and I think it's been a while since I've been here. So wanted to circle back. And because of our short time, I won't have an opportunity to get into everything, but we, of course, keep our project page up to date as much as possible and have all of our materials there. So just a quick reminder that our South Logan TOD project is focused on creating more walkable mixed-use places along the city line in the Logan neighborhood. And the city line is, of course, opening on July 18th. There'll be a ribbon cutting ceremony at the dismet station, which is right in our project area. So pretty exciting. So I'm going to share a little bit about the subarea plan and the EIS, the process around it. I'm not going to go into all, again, all the details of those documents, but I just want to highlight a few things. So I always like to bring up the plan values. These are within the subarea plan, and they help draw out the unique aspects of the study area and kind of highlight the, the values and the principles that we want to bring through the subarea plan, through the goals and policies that we have outlined. And so looking at connectivity, accessibility to the river and throughout the area, supporting the multiple universities and the health sciences sector in the area, looking at jobs and employment. Of course, housing options and affordability is very important. Looking at minimizing both residential as well as local business displacement, and then building on South Logan's urban context with, and history with integrity. And just a quick look at the alternatives. So in the subarea plan and then analyzed in the environmental impact statement, we have four alternatives. And we had a number of workshops kind of as we were developing these. But we have, the first one is the no action alternative, and that's kind of the baseline. It doesn't mean nothing's changing in the next 20 years. It's just that we're looking at what's there currently. The city line's obviously opening. The Trent Bridge actually reopens next week. So all of those things will still happen. Just the additional improvements that are coming out of this plan would, would not be considered in the alternative one. And then the action alternatives, two, three, and four, look at a number of different zoning concepts, different priorities, different resource and improvements, and all have kind of a different flavor. So alternative two is called Hamilton Crossing, and that's looking at kind of the, the movement across Hamilton East and West and looking at some expansion of the centers and corridors in the south and some expansion of housing capacity in the north. Alternative three, Southeast Riverfront, is really looking at driving a lot of investment and resources to the Southeast Riverfront area. Again, having that expansion of the centers and corridors, a little bit more expansion of the Form Based Code, and then more incremental change in the north. And then in alternative four, our TOD emphasis one, that is kind of our, our max look at how we can really leverage all three of those transit stops within the study area and look at sort of a, a larger density increase. And so these kind of provide bookends for our analysis and from, you know, no action to kind of a max range. And so that's what our analysis is based on. So we released the subarea plan and the DEIS, two documents, on May 9th, and had a 30-day public comment period through June 8th. And again, this, the subarea plan is providing that framework and overarching goals and policies. And then the DEIS is doing the analysis of those alternatives, looking at impacts and mitigation strategies as well. And because it's a planned action, it's looking at the study area, again, in much more detail so that we're providing that level of analysis that developers could use to cover their projects as they're coming in, if it falls within that range that we've studied. We hosted a public workshop on May 18th at Gonzaga and had some really great discussions. Again, this is where I'm probably, I'm not going to go into detail, but we do have a workshop summary online. And if you have specific questions, I can, I can give more details on that, but I will just keep going. Oh, I guess I do have a slide here. Never mind. So really quickly, we heard some areas of agreement and areas of disagreement within the workshop. We do have a lot more information, conversations that were had. We had some small group discussions. But just to kind of highlight some things, there was some agreement on limiting impacts historic buildings along Mission Avenue, or there's the Mission Avenue Historic District, and so that was brought up as, you know, wanting to maintain the character around there along Mission. The quality design for new buildings is important. We've mentioned design standards, and that has come up quite a bit. This neighborhood is, really wants to see design standards adopted as part of the zone changes going forward and really integrated into the, the preferred alternative. We would not make those changes in this process, but we would highlight what we could do, and then that would be kind of a next follow-up project. And then also agreement that the southeast area is the best opportunity for new development, sort of where there's the warehouses and as those change over for redevelopment. Some areas of disagreement, if you remember, we had a concept back in January about a Sharp Avenue pedestrian bridge, and the proposal is just to study that. You know, we don't have any cost estimates. We haven't looked at it in depth, but there was some concern about adding that to the neighborhood and some disagreement around that. Some disagreement around development near Gonzaga, sort of getting into that historic area or the historic homes as well as expansion of commercial off of Hamilton and how that might impact commercial on Hamilton. And then there was also a lot of discussion about the detached housing as being used for student housing versus apartment buildings. And there's this feeling that there's a lot of, you know, the historic homes, or there's a lot of large homes in this area that have that kind of single-family detached look, but in, but they're actually multiple units inside of them. And so many of the area already functions kind of as multiple, multi-unit, multifamily, even within a kind of single-family character context. So there was just some discussion about that. So again, we have a full summary online. The public comment received, again, we have, so the, the public workshop was part of the public comment period, and so the feedback we received there is integrated into the process. We also got 16 written comment letters, and so five from agencies, three from organizations or institutions, and then eight individual comment letters. And each of those address more than one comment. So we, I think we almost have 100 different comment items coming out of these, and we're working through those, analyzing them and integrating them into the final EIS. So I'm just finishing up a public comment summary, which will be online soon. And then we're also going to be sharing those with Plan Commission next week, and so I can forward you all the, the full comments if you'd like as well. But ultimately, we will be responding to these in writing and then publishing them in the final EIS as an appendix. And we'll go through each one and have a response, whether it modified the, modified the plan or modified the analysis, if it was just a factual change, or if it's just, you know, thanks for commenting, sort of acknowledgement. Okay, so what I want to talk about really quickly, preferred alternatives. So after we have the, the, the direction in the subarea plan, the public comment that we received, and then the analysis of the alternatives, ultimately, we want to put forward a preferred alternative. So we have the three different action alternatives within the subarea plan, but we ultimately want to get to one so that we have some direction going forward that we can base our implementation and, you know, future land use changes on. So that's what we've been working on. And the final preferred alternative may be composed of some combination of all of these. So it's not necessarily we're going with just one alternative, but there might be different features within them that are combined into a preferred alternative. So as long as we've studied it and it falls within this range, then it can be incorporated into the preferred alternative. So a first draft, we presented to this at Plan Commission back in June. And there's kind of three different concept areas that I'm just going to briefly walk through, starting from the south, because again, there's more consensus there about, about supporting development and growth. But we would see that change from the general commercial to the centers and corridors. That's the purple down there and have a 150-foot height limit. You see a little red blob there, CA1. That's the Form Based Code. And generally, with the Form Based Code, we are looking at still maintaining it, but consolidating the context areas. Right now, there's four. So looking to bring that down to one or two and increasing the height as well. But then there's some provisions in the Form Based Code that do things that like ground floor activation or restricting drive-throughs that the neighborhood really wants to see maintained. And of course, they put a lot of effort into the Form Based Code. So we're just kind of tweaking it, keeping it there, expanding it in some. And so in this area in the southeast, we would look at having a little bit of a blob there around Columbus and Springfield, just one block off of Hamilton, to kind of capture as redevelopment happens, sort of a Main Street feel. So this is more conceptual right now, but looking at how we can activate the storefront and the ground floor retail there.
Don't mean to interrupt. I just wanted to point out that when we did Form Based Code, we neglected to do design standards. And so I'm hoping that that will be part of the conversation as well.
Absolutely, yes. And, and that's something we heard loud and clear from the neighborhood as well, and that's continually come up. So the Form Based Code was effectively incomplete, and so trying to finish that, but also modify it so that it's better implemented. So moving over to the second one, we see some consolidation of zoning for Gonzaga. They have a number of different zones right now, proposing RHD 70 and, for them, which would allow them to build kind of four or five-story buildings and sort of get to their capacity needs for students. And then we have a little bit of a transition area, RHD 55, going down to RMF 35 as we get closer to Hamilton. And then the, or sorry, to Mission. And then in the, the third zoning concept area, there's been more discussion and, let me see if I have, no. Okay, there's been a little bit more discussion here of, do we maintain a residential high density around Mission Park that could maybe activate the space a bit more, bring more people to the area? Or the neighborhood sees a preference for having lower, lower intensity, lower density here with RMF. And so we put this forward to Plan Commission. There is single-family homes in this area. It's a little, slightly, a little bit different context than some of the other areas. And so the neighborhood felt, you know, maybe a lower density would be better immediately around Mission. So we put this forth to the Plan Commission, and they liked the idea of more density. So they wanted to see RHD over RMF, but actually propose RHD 70 instead of the RHD 55. So more consistent with what we're doing with Gonzaga. And they were really taking a longer term look at the 20-year growth period, the proximity to the Columbus and Mission Station, and wanting to see over time, like what is the ultimate end goal? And they felt that density in this area would be, would be better suited and would activate the space more and have more people live closer to those amenities. So we went, I guess I'll come back to that. Oh, no, wait. I'm going to jump forward. Sorry. So we went back to the neighborhood on June 22nd, or the community, and kind of shared that feedback, sort of a little bit of an iterative process. And at that workshop, we actually got general support for the density. People understood the reasoning behind that. But then back to Councilmember Keneer's point, really wanted to see that prioritization of design standards with any zone changes or zone increases. So, and then there was some concerns around parking, public safety, just more people in the area and kind of how that all works out. You know, we do know that behaviors will hopefully change over time. People take more, take public transit, use the city line. And so some of that is a bit unknown, but we want, we do want to leverage the public investment in the bus rapid transit route. And so I guess back really quick to this other conversation that has been kind of floating up around City Council, how can we integrate affordability proactively and, you know, see some outcomes within this study area? So there were some discussions around that same time on anti-displacement and affordability strategies. And so the yellow areas here are where there would be kind of a significant upzone and increased development capacity. And there's different approaches. You know, one is to just allow the increases outright, and then, you know, maybe the market would take care of it. You know, there is MFTE in this area. You know, there are some other strategies there, but just allow it outright, which is essentially kind of what we were doing. And then another one is more of an incentive approach. So having sort of a base zoning, but then if, to get to a higher level, more height, or, you know, more capacity, integrating some incentives so that people can get more. And then really quickly, the third one is a mandatory approach, so that there, there would have to be affordability integrated in. So those are some discussions that we've been having. We probably want to take this back to Plan Commission as well, but would certainly love your feedback too.
Yeah, I guess I would, I would like to better understand, I mean, what are the conditions that you're considering for a mandatory? Like what would be the situation on the ground when we would mandate some sort of affordability component?
Yeah. We haven't explored any of these in depth yet. They're just kind of, if you're looking at paths forward, these would be kind of the three different ways to go. But, you know, some cities have a certain percentage of units must be affordable, and, you know, that would all have to be determined, but that's one way that they do it.
Well, I will just say, I think the incentive approach, which is what we do now with MFTE, to me, that, that is the best approach. You know, we are not the easiest, friendliest place to build in. We have 80 to 120-day permit times right now. It's not a great experience, I know, for a lot of developers. And every obstacle we put up is probably a house that we're not going to get built, because they're going to go to North Idaho. They're going to go where it's a lot easier. And, and frankly, to do this in one neighborhood, I would be extremely concerned at the loss of investment in this neighborhood if that's what we do, because they'll just avoid this one neighborhood like the plague. And so I just don't want to see those sorts of unintended consequences happen. So I would plead with this council that we do not take a mandatory approach and that we look at incentive-based policies that can help encourage rather than mandate, because I just don't think the mandate will work, and I think it'll backfire.
Councilmember Keneer.
So I don't disagree. I really want to be very deliberate when we say affordable. There's that word again. We don't know what it means. And offering incentives is good. There may need to be a combination of things so that we're not just doing one thing. But in, if we don't define what affordable is, we're not going to get to where we need to go. So I would really encourage us to stop using that word unless we're really articulating what it is.
And I, I think probably you're going to end up on the incentives approach, but when you do that, you have to ratchet down the buy right ability to do it so that you actually get. So the MFTE incentives are, you know, they're fine, but they don't really move the needle. We're talking about anti-displacement, and the only way we're going to do that is we're going to have to literally buy units. So I think if you say, all right, you get three stories, but if you do X percentage of afford, permanently affordable housing, then you get two more. I think if you do it that way, you can do it. And also, I think the way to do it really is that what you need to do to get the incentives is agree to sell units to the city using our 1590 funds, that we actually get permanent control of it, either to rent or to offer it to people as ownership permanently affordable. But I don't think unless we actually buy units, we are going to do anti-displacement. But the beauty of upzoning is that you're putting so many more units on a parcel that you can easily find units for the people who currently live there or would have lived there, and you still have way more. The developer is getting paid cash money for the fair price, market price of it, so they're not losing out. So I think we have to figure out how to do that. But that's going to take more regulatory administrative time to do it. But if we get permanent housing, and I agree with everyone that says you've got to say, all right, is it going to be workforce under? all right, is it going to be workforce under 120? Is it going to be under 80? Is it going to be permanently affordable? Whatever, you got to define it. But I think there is a way forward, but it is going to take more city work. But in the long run, it will help us. The other thing, which is not about affordability, but I say this every time, and this is my last time I get to weigh in on this, any parcel near the water or on the water, it's the same approach. You have a certain height level, but if they're willing to grant a public easement for trails, then they get to go higher, and that way you get a walkable, mixed-use, high-density water, working waterfront that's just going to be a fabulous place. But if you, if you don't do it in a uniform way, then there's somebody's going to build all the way up to the thing, and you're not going to have that ability.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I would just say, so two things. One, I hope it's not us literally buying the units. I hope it's a nonprofit or some other entity. Using 1590, sure, but, but I hope it's not us. We're not great landlords. The second piece, in my mind, is, is on the incentive-based. I just think that, I lost my, I lost my train of thought. I'll come back. Keep going.
I would say that, also add that we did bring this to that June 22 community workshop, and people there thought the incentives approach was the right approach, too.
I recall now, sorry. My only request, I guess, would be that in doing, as the council president said, you know, allowing for bonuses and things like that, that we allow the bonus to really be a bonus. So it's not like we're going to take 55 feet that we allow now and reduce that to 35 and then say, oh, you can go back to 55 if you. It should be, no, you can go to 70 or 150. It should be well above, I think, what we sort of consider the base right now. And so, you know, we're in a housing crisis, we need to maximize and all that. And so if it's adding levels or adding capacity that was not even contemplated before, then I think it's a great incentive. Otherwise, we still need the housing, so we shouldn't, you know, lessen it.
And I, I think I mostly agree with you. In terms of where we are now, they shouldn't go down. But in terms of allowing upzoning, it's a percentage of that upzoning that needs to be the bonus.
Yeah.
So just wrapping up, we still have quite a bit of process left. We're going to be back at Plan Commission next Wednesday to kind of share the discussions we've had in the interim. Ideally, we would have a new, sort of updated preferred alternative map for discussion, and then trying to ultimately get to that public hearing so that we can have more engagement and public comment on that as a package. So we anticipate that that could happen in August. We would put forward a resolution that would recognize the plan as well as the direction of the preferred alternative, have the final subarea plan, and then the final environmental impact statement, have that Plan Commission hearing in August, and then, based on their recommendation, bring it to you all in September for that whole process of consideration. But ultimately, we'd be looking to adopt by resolution for now, and then the next phase is the implementation and ordinances. And so then we'd bring those forward for the land use changes and other, other components. And that, and we'd be doing that towards the end of this year, early next year. So that is all I have. Thank you. Appreciate the discussion.
You're changing the world, so thank you. Awesome. Okay, so, super brief. We've briefed this concept before, but not the actual resolution. This is the establishment of the Municipal Law and Justice Coordinating Subcommittee to add to our subcommittees. And it's, I call it 3.0 on these subcommittees. In the past, it was just, not just, but community members interacting, but always wanting the administration to come. And then more recently, we've been successful in getting some administration to come on subject matters. This would be actually having administration and city members on the subcommittee as a mix. So you'd have your police chief, you'd have your public safety chair and vice chair, you have prosecutor, public defender, or judge, lots of community members. And it would attempt to replace the Spokane Regional Law and Justice Commission in ways, since we are now excluded from that as a city. So it tries to take all the best of all those various things, put that together, and has 10 community members, 10 city members, and policy advisor, and his job description is to oversee this already. We had, probably get a little help from Maggie Yates at the very start of it. She has a little more money on her contract to do that. But it would hopefully be really that place where the public and the systems professionals would interact and come up with proposals to improve things.
Is the county's entity still going?
It goes something. It's, they totally changed what it was, so they took the community members out, and they, but I, I don't know how often they meet, but they, it still exists. Anyway, that's coming up. All right, but why you all came, really, is budget, supplemental budget conversation. And Matt, I have you as lead on this, but I'm not sure all the things.
So I will not be lead on this, but this is kind of a culmination of all the discussions that we've had here internally, also privately with the Budget Committee, Council President Beggs, Councilmember Cathcart, Councilmember Wilkerson, along with Tanya Wallace, her team, Garrett Jones, Johnny Perkins, Mayor Woodward, everybody, a lot of key players, stakeholders were at the table. There were some general guidance given by administration based on the conversations that we had afterwards. I think we came to kind of an agreement of where we should go from the Budget Committee standpoint. Their intention is to kind of brief the entirety of council today so that we can finalize the supplemental budget to be approved by July 10. And I'm going to just leave that to Tanya Wallace and her team. If you have questions, I'll be over here, but I'll mostly just be taking notes.
All right. Tanya, welcome.
And I think Matt covered that very nicely. It has been a lot of work and at least three meetings with the Budget Committee of the City Council and a lot of the mayor's team, and I'm sorry.
I'll get that full screen for you, Tanya.
Thank you. I was like, wasn't quite sure what was going on there. So I am going to really just focus, this is, there are a lot of SBOs coming your way, and I believe Jessica is out there in the audience, and she can give a little briefing on what to expect. So really, I'm going to focus on some of the amendment process, what we've gone through that's coming to you today, some of the realignment recommendations, and this is largely going to be focused on the police. There are a couple other SBOs coming to you that are more fixes, and Jessica can provide more light on those. And then we'll just close with some of the proposed general fund amendments, again, largely focused on the police. So the realignment process, it really started with the general fund long-term projections presented in May. In addition, the projections are really intended to focus on the next year and give some insight into 2023. The quarterly report process gives more, is the better tool to focus really on precisely what's happening right now, what's going on. And of course, we just closed our second quarter, June 30, so that will be another opportunity for us to really review at a deeper level what's going on. But it really did get started there. Following that were subsequent study sessions specifically focused on police personnel. In fact, I think that was about two weeks ago, and that involved about four weeks of really deep diving into police and what was going on, and a lot of information was presented on that. Then we did have three joint sessions between the administration and the City Council Budget Committee, which has led us to today. This is a high-level review of, again, largely focused on police, and that's what's colored in blue there. We will have, the SBO will encompass a FEMA reimbursement. This is from the 2021 windstorm that'll provide some revenue. Those expenses have already incurred.
Tell us what those numbers are, because they're very small.
We will make sure you get the larger, the larger print on that.
Well, it's important, because we will need to ask questions now, so.
I'll send them to you.
Thank you.
And so, so that 636,000 FEMA reimbursement, FEMA reimburses about 70% of those costs. We covered the rest. The police program revenue, there are various details, and that accumulates to 693,000. One of the most, more significant ones is 250,000 for our third BIA, so that will be additional program revenue coming in. And then the row three there, the transfer in from the Criminal Justice Fund, that totals 4.6 million, and that is one of the more significant changes that we came to agree to in the three joint sessions. And then Public Safety Personnel Fund, 2.85 million dollars from those reserves. And then a transfer out, there's also Public Safety Personnel Fund from the current budget, 22,700. And this is really because personnel, this was for a, this is a fix. This is just a fix. It's still funded from that, but the people are actually in the general fund, so we just need to transfer the money into the general fund. So that's just a fix. On the expenditure side, we would be increasing police overall by 8.4 million, partly funded from their own program revenue, and then the remainder of that would be from those transfer in from Criminal Justice and Public Safety. We also have a payment to the UD PDA, a retro settlement of 265,000 that was identified in a settle-up with the U District. And then the senior criminal justice positions, this is that 22,700. This was for some enhancements and promotions in, with those positions. The budget went over into Criminal Justice, but the personnel are actually in the general fund, so this is just a fix for that. Judges' salary increases, though that information came to us from the state that on July 1, the judges will be receiving a pay increase, so this rectifies that budget for them. And then RV junk towing, this is a continued effort that was really hyper-focused in last year and this year to clean up the junk RVs that are on the streets. So this helps cover that gap, and we are still also working proactively with the vendor.
Is that also related to abandoned vehicles, or is that a separate line item?
My information that I've had is really focused on the RVs.
Okay.
And then you see the FLMA increase. This is a slight increase that also went to effect with the state, starts July 1, so this is our calculation of what that will be. I know you can't see the very bottom line, but we will be using 193,000 of revenue that was unallocated in the general fund when the budget was adopted. And then the last line just shows that the remaining balance in the, in the unappropriated fund balance stays the same.
Tanya, I have a question. So I'm looking at the Public Safety Personnel Fund, is that the levy?
Yes.
Okay, that would be helpful to put levy in. So that's the one that we passed back in 20?
2019.
19, okay. And how much is left after we spend that, 3,850,000, how much will be left in that fund?
I will get the answer to that. I have a range already calculated of what we expect that fund to end with.
Okay.
I just don't recall off the top of my head.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. This is a focused look of what was presented to you two weeks ago, and really is the largest element of the general fund realignment that we're talking about. So I thought it was worth presenting a second time, really, the budget, the projection, and then the difference with some of those larger categories highlighted, that it's really being driven by that overtime of uniform overtime because of the vacancies that we have. And then down there in the benefits, this is your FICA, your retirement, those additional benefits that are a function of pay. And that was also a change that came into the 2022 CBA that changed the VIBA contribution of the city.
So the 70, the 70, not all of those are empty slots. Some of those are people on medical leave. There's a number of reasons why those, those folks aren't active duty. But the ones that are empty, can we use those vacancies as salary savings?
Thank you, Councilmember Kinnear. And that has been calculated in that projection for base wages.
Okay.
And the budget was also discounted, assuming that there would be a certain level of vacant positions.
Okay.
This is just more detail about police, and specifically to the 400, yeah, the 693,000 of revenue, you can see specifically where it's coming from. And then the 8.4 million for a net of 7.7. Line 17, I wanted to kind of highlight, because if you're calculating from the previous slide, where it says 8.7 million is the difference, and then you come here and you see 8.4 million, that is really line 17. There is a service promotion budget reserve. We intend on using it to help with this. So some of the strategy from what we presented two weeks ago to today, and were part of the conversations that we had in our joint sessions, is to utilize projected police programming to cover this increased cost. That is obviously a funding of first resort. And then utilize REIT I monies for homelessness, and you pass that SBO totaling about 4.7 million. We will use that and displace the Criminal Justice dollars and move those in to help cover police. I do have up there, Councilmember Kinnear, at least for the Criminal Justice Fund, of how that might end. And that would end with approximately 2.7 to 1.5 million would still be left in that fund after this shifting of funding. And then utilize Public Safety Personnel reserves up to 2.85. So in this respect, the strategy is that we would only use those funds as a last resort and retain as much as we can in that fund. So if the general fund does come in a little more positively, such as sales tax or interest earnings or other miscellaneous revenues, we would utilize those first before we actually transfer any from the criminal, the Public Safety Personnel Fund. And then address changing needs in track. So this has also been heavily discussed. We do need to amend the current contract, because that was assumed by TSA from Guardians, and that was limited to a little more than 5 million. So we do need to amend that to, to account for the increased cost. But we're also preparing for service delivery for 2024 using some ARPA. And Kim is here, if you'd like any further information on what specifically is happening in that arena, but we are working on that.
From where? Do you have questions? Eric, Chair, thank you.
Good afternoon, Council President and member, Councilmembers. Thank you for your time. I'll be really brief. I just have a short summary of some of the updates from the Trent Resource and Assistance Center of TRACK, as well as a little bit of the next steps that we're, that we've been looking at in the group sessions. First, I just wanted to start out with a couple of updates from TRACK in regards to an opportunity to share that the actual monthly costs that have been averaging at TRACK have been less than the 750,000 that we had projected in March for the sheltering services, averaging about 130,000 for the revived services that are there, and about 75, 71,500 for the lease and facility costs, which have been totaled so far to the monthly. And this is just from the beginning of the contract until now, of 951,000 monthly or 11.4 million annually. That sounds big, I understand that, but the thing I, we wanted to really stress is that that was since the projection in March of 2023, when we all really started talking about all of this, the estimate was going to be 14.9 million. So some of this has occurred, a lot of this difference has been attributed to the Salvation Army's efforts to reduce their costs and deliver quality services. So moving forward to that, like Tanya just mentioned with TRACK being funded through 2023, I just wanted to do some updates as well, is that we I just wanted to do some updates as well as that we, we are looking at, well, let me back up soon. CHHS will be providing that amendment to council. But we've also been looking at different ways and conversations with the Budget Committee that we can reduce some of those costs. One of the ideas that have come up is to identify strategies to lowering that monthly cost by doing some strategically sourcing things along the lines of the laundry, the meals, the sanitation, the security, as well as later in the RFP as well, the naturally the operations and the services. So being, trying to put all of those within one RFP. The, the possible, this will help us maybe create more competition between the service providers. As we all know, Onsite's the only provider for the sanitation side. So there may be a way to actually go into a city contract with that. But these are things we're gonna have to explore. But also along the lines, all of these services will be put into the, the RFP that will be coming out. And because this is relatively new information, this is going to take a little time for me to digest in regards to looking at, we need to look at which ones have been competitively bidded. We can, my, the city might, if we chose to, to assume those contracts. But we're, but those that have not been competitively bidded by Salvation Army will have to figure out properly how to do, to insert those into the contracts. And so that's going to take a little time. I will keep you posted on that. We'll start right away on that. I'm not talking about months, but I'm talking about a few weeks in regards to hopefully being able to really provide what that looks like within an RFP. What is all the structure of each one of those? If we had six different levels in the RFP, which is right now is what we're talking about, that we want to make sure that depending on which providers ask for what, that, that we really have all that really, we have a plan, we, we know what is going to come out at the end properly instead of just sort of sometimes as it shows up. So once we have the RFP all drafted, our draft will go out to all of you for your review. And we welcome all the feedback on that either ahead of time or during a study session or however you prefer that. And drafted the, and then after the draft has been approved, we will put it out on posting for, with the application. And the applications will be reviewed and then the announcement will be announced. And in the discussions with Council President Biggs and, and Councilman Cathcart, Council, Council, sorry, Councilmember Wilkerson. The funding sources, ARPA will be the anticipated funding stream for TRACK through, either through September or through the end of the year if we can have savings within that year. And our goal is to minimize the cost while transitioning the services from the city over to the regional homeless collaborative. So yes, sorry, I kind of went fast there, but I didn't want to.
So good, good information, thank you. Wouldn't the costs go down if we had fewer people in the center? So it's dependent on how many people are actually serving.
Yes, you're correct.
So my, my question then is, the goal should be to get people moving into either transitional housing or permanent housing. Do we have somebody like a navigator that is doing that work?
Revive is doing that at the track right now. They have been working this full year, yes. And so they're, they work with, as well as Salvation Army does do some of those social services as well. But there's also Frontier Behavioral Health is there as well as CHAZ, which from the health side, that's often important as well. They have a lot of providers coming there. Hopefully they'll have the remote warrant, remote hearing process pilot project there, which will help some of the warrants to go away to help get folks into housing. You know, there, there are some different elements at TRACK for that. Because navigation, you're right. I mean, navigation isn't a really important thing. And I think another thing that I hope for is that we look in the future for ways of doing more transitional housing because that's going to be another one of those pieces of getting folks housing ready. And navigators are great, but sometimes folks still are not as housing ready as we would hope they would be. And if they fall out of the housing, then here, you know, they, they fall back into homelessness. So all those elements are really important to move forward. And let me, I, I don't think I said that, sorry. In the new RFP, there will be operations as well as services within that RFP, not separate like they had, had been in the past. So thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Yes.
So I'm not sure you have the answer to this, but I'm gonna ask it because we've been talking so much about it. Any numbers yet for that homeless regional collaboration? Do we have any financials on that, what the ask is gonna be from the county, the city?
I don't know that. Just, we, I know that they're, you know, from their presentation that they did last week, we know that they're looking at the continuum of care funds, the HUD funds and some of the state funds, what that looks like within the county, the city of Liberty Lake and, sorry, why am I saying, well, I think the R1, sorry. Spokane Valley.
Yeah.
And, and I, I don't have those, I'm sorry.
No, that's, no, that's fine. I just, we talked about it.
We'll probably all know when we know.
Yes, we talked about it last night at CHHS, it was in my brain.
Right.
Thanks.
Yes, Councilmember.
Thank you, Kim, you gave us the steps. Do you, did I hear a timeline or I did not hear the timeline when this will occur? When you expect the RFP to go out?
We had a little more of a timeline before all of the six different, the laundry, that all of that contracting out, where the city might take on that contract to, or assume those contracts to avoid some of the indirect admin costs that are put onto those. So that's, that piece will, that's why I'm, well, honestly slowing us down just slightly than what we had talked about only because the one thing I know that myself and, and Jen Saracides, we, what we really want to achieve here is, is that we really have contracts, because we're talking about, we could be talking about six different providers. And that all within an RFP is rather complicated. But we also would say maybe in the RFP, like Council President had suggested, as well as that maybe one provider takes all that on. But before we go to that, we really need to know, number one, which contracts could we assume? And if we want to assume all of, you know, if everybody agrees to that. But also what, the problem with the contracts, as all of you know, is sometimes we get going too fast and we leave something out that we really needed to put in. And I think we want to really make sure, especially since we're having so many different elements, that we do it right. So two to three weeks maybe to get that piece down. And then having the discussions of what it really looks like of when that, that, what's the deadline on that RFP, so.
And I only ask that because it, how, depending on how long it's delayed, what type of financial impact will that have? So if we're still not under contract and it's pushed out further, what would that look like?
I apologize, I was thinking about the, the RFP more than the amendment. Jen has been working on the amendment. I think our issue there was knowing like what was a timeframe to the end of the year. I think along those lines, but the amendment we're hoping would come in. We may need to ask for suspension of rules if we could do that. But that, Jen's had that ready for quite a while. We're just waiting, we had just been waiting for the funding. Yeah, sorry.
Councilmember Wilkerson, as we talked about, and sorry to intercede, but as we talked about and we kind of looked at in the joint meeting, there are certain cost elements that we're going to like, like sanitation. If that is something we can immediately assume at a cost savings, we want to jumpstart on those. And so we're gonna be looking at those in the next two weeks if we can assume. And then those assumption of some of those contracts and costs will inform the RFP for sheltering services and assistance services. So we're gonna be looking on those in the next two weeks and we'll have a better picture of a timeline with that. If, if that, that kind of helps. We looked at those, remember Friday, they were kind of highlighted and I know the rest of the council didn't get that benefit, but that's kind of the direction that we're going in.
If you, I do have those totals real fast, if you'd like to know the yearly totals of some of the things that we were looking at for sourcing out, contracting, it's not sourcing out, sorry. I'm way too new at this sometimes, my apologies. But like just the showers alone through the whole, the, the whole thing is $960,000 a year. So admin indirect on that. So the meals, seven hot meals a day, seven, three hot meals a day is 1.7 million dollars for 350 people. For, and also on the, I shouldn't say just the showers, sorry, it was the whole sanitation. And keep in mind, for every 25 people, we have to have additional outdoor restrooms as well as ADA. So those numbers, the more people we have, the more numbers go up. Laundry, 1.2, that's bedding, that's, you know, the hall works. And security is 555,000. So all of that, when admin is put on that, it makes, it's a huge, hopefully I'm saying that right, sorry. But anyway, so those, those were those numbers, so.
Councilmember Bingle is patiently waiting and we can't really see him. So I'm gonna let him go. Welcome, Councilmember Bingle.
Thank you. I was just quickly gonna say that the numbers for what we're wanting or what they're gonna be asking us to bring towards the regional collaboration still has to be negotiated. And so there, we won't have any numbers on that until we are meeting with the valley and the county and the smaller cities in the area.
Councilmember Zepo.
Thank you.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask really quick, what was this, what's the status of the installation of the permanent bathrooms? I heard that there might have been a delay.
And thank you, because one thing I was supposed to say was on some of that one contract on sanitation, hopefully that contract would go away by February 2024 because that's the estimated timeframe right now that I think pretty much all of the remodel would be done, isn't it, Tanya? So the bathrooms would be, it depends on what part they start with. We're being very protective of making sure the, there's a wall between the guests and the construction. So I'm not sure what's going in first, but, but yes, February of 2023 is the hopes that, that would, that would remove a lot of the laundry cost, would remove a lot of the, a lot, obviously of the sanitation as well. And even in the meals, because there's a high, some of that cost is paper cups, napkins and all of that, which if two dishwashers or one dishwasher is added, which they've asked for, could really reduce that cost. So thank you for the question.
I was gonna say, it might be helpful at some point to get an update on those construction projects for the bathrooms and all of that at, at TRACK, just to see where we're at.
I will be glad to provide those.
Yeah, because I hadn't, I don't think anybody's heard much on them.
Okay. A lot of that's been because the bid, they've all gone out to bid. And so I think they're getting close to having some of those bids back. But I'll make sure we, we keep you updated on that, thank you.
That makes sense, thanks.
I have just a couple comments in my, again, my last times. I think we have still been waiting, we have not gotten a written opinion yet from legal on how much we have to pay in overhead. So we know that the federal government has given Salvation Army an exception that they can be paid up to 25% administrative overhead. I don't think we have to, it's just negotiable. It's just we could if we wanted to. And again, they agreed to a contract that didn't have anywhere near what they're asking now. They already agreed to that, so, and I'm not really sure who's negotiating that, but that is still there. So we have to get that question answered before we can finalize the amended contract for the time until October 1st, when the new contract will go into place. And I, we just, ideally with an RFP, we will save money. So every delay, we are losing money, are costing more money. And so I totally get that we need to get the contracts right. But we've been, Councilmember Cathcart and Wilkerson and I have been requesting since March that we RFP. And so it's, it's frustrating to hear that we're, although I think we're going in the right direction. But every, every week, every month is more money that we could then spend in other ways on other homelessness things.
And I've heard, I've heard all of your concern on that and we will move as fast as we can. And also, Council President, we, we've talked about, and I assured you I would also do a meeting that with you and legal and probably Jason from procurement and us in regards to finalizing that, you know, the legal side of the federal nonprofit reduction rate, I think that's what it's called, as well as that I would talk again with the Salvation Army. So, thank you. Any other questions?
All right.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thanks, everybody. And then we're gonna finalize that SBO for Monday, is that the plan?
Yes, Council President, and if I may, the SBO package that will be coming to you is a little more inclusive than just what we've presented here in the presentation. If I can just take five more minutes of your time and have Jessica Stratton come up and give you just a quick briefing of what else to expect, so you're not surprised when you see that in your package.
All right, thank you. Jacoby, can I control this?
Yep.
Okay.
It should just be the other tab already open there.
Oh, you're on top of it. So this morning, we sent you the mid-year SBO packet. There's actually five SBOs in there and I do feel like the first one is the most important one and it's the, it's out, it's outshining all the rest. The first one is the one that the CFO just briefed, is the general fund SBO. It's going to realign various revenues and expenses, mostly for the police department. So that's this one. The second SBO adjusts the budget for the Washington State Paid Family Medical Leave Act for all funds. So that includes general. The rate increased 20 basis points at the, at the end of 2022. And that was about right when we were finalizing the budget. So this is just a timing issue, so it's just considered a budget fix. The third SBO adds accidentally omitted REIT revenue into the Streets Maintenance Fund. So that's Fund 1100, that's overseen by Clint Harris. This was just a misunderstanding on how to budget capital projects using the new software. Because of the TRACK operations SBO that took 4.7 million from REIT 1, it did actually allow us the opportunity to split it between REIT 1 and REIT 2. So that is what you'll see in that SBO. The fourth SBO is a salary savings SBO in the Criminal Justice Assistance Fund. Interpreter costs are continuing to increase. So we are wanting to move the budget from the admin specialist that is budgeted in there. She wasn't hired until May. So we thought it would be most prudent to kind of keep all the interpreter costs together within Criminal Justice Fund. So that's why we're just asking for salary savings SBO for there. And finally, the fifth SBO removes an accidental duplication of budget from the facilities capital fund, partially funded through 23 budget, partially funded through 2022 encumbrance carryforward. It was identified at the beginning of 2023, it was quarantined into a reserve for budget line, line item. And so this SBO is actually just requesting us to remove it altogether. So in all, there's only two SBOs that affect the general fund. So you've seen this before from the CFO, this is a little bit more precise. And the impact of all of that is a net increase of expense budget of about 164,000 for the general fund. All others, the three others are in different funds. Are there any questions about those? If you have questions later, you know where I am. I did want to mention that there are other SBOs in various states of in-progress that I have in my queue right now. And you will see those as I get them flashed out. I'm currently doing the second quarterly report, which you'll see on June 17th at FNA Committee. And that review might also trigger, trigger others.
All right.
Thank you.
That's good, thank you. All right, unless there's anything else, I think that brings us to the end of our meeting.
Steve.
We're adjourned.